Good evening, folks, and welcome to the October 2nd, 2014 regularly scheduled board meeting of Buncombe County School Board. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and the first thing we'd like to do, if you would all please stand, we'll have the presentation of the colors presented by the Irwin High School Junior ROTC Program.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we have our moment of silence, I'd like for everyone to remember tonight, starting this summer, we've had several deaths in our schools, and just recently, we had a former student that just recently passed away. If you can remember those students and folks, and your thoughts and prayers, please bow for a moment of silence. Thank you, and please be seated. Before we get started, we'll need to approve the agenda. A couple of things that I would, well, a couple of changes I would like to make, and a couple of additions. Under the action agenda, I would like to add a nomination for naming our county commissioners, the County Commissioners of the Year. And under good news, I would like to add some special recognition. I would like to move from the consent agenda, the minutes from the September 4th, 2014 regular meeting, from the consent agenda to the action agenda. So, do I have a nomination to approve that?
There's a problem with adding the commissioner nomination to the action agenda, because that was not submitted seven days in advance.
I'm adding that for the board to approve.
By policy, the board can add things by majority vote at the meeting.
Well, per Policy 2330, it says you cannot, unless it was on the, in the request, seven days in advance, unless we suspend Policy 2330.
My understanding of the policy, and I can double-check it, is that the board can, at the time of the meeting, make a change. If you're going to do something.
Okay.
I'll read it to you right now.
A minute, Ms. Baldwin, I appreciate it. Second paragraph of the policy, this board added that at the meeting, the board may by majority vote add an item that is not on the agenda. I'm aware of the previous language that talks about the six days and items not being on a motion to amend the agenda if there are items requested to the superintendent, but the second paragraph gives the board the absolute right to add an item that is not on the agenda.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda and the changes that I presented?
So moved.
There a second? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
I wanted to amend the agenda.
Please say aye. Ms. Baldwin, what's the one second? Can I have a motion to approve? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any noes? Okay, all right, so we have the agenda. All right, is there a motion to make a change to the agenda?
I move, per Policy 2330, I move to amend the agenda to add the motion submitted seven days in advance to direct the superintendent to investigate the child nutrition chemical bid.
Okay, that's in the form of a motion. As you may know, we discussed that at the last board meeting at length. Is there a second? Okay, hearing none, the motion fails. All right, so we're going to move on to the superintendent's comments.
Good evening, everyone. October is going to be an extremely busy month in Buncombe County Schools, so I want to begin by talking about some dates, making sure that is on both the board's and public's calendar. First, we have the Evelyn Charities 14th Annual Walk, Run, or Roll. That will be held Saturday, October 11th, on the A.D. Tech campus. Later in the month, on Saturday, October 25th, the Buncombe County Schools Foundation will sponsor the Amazing Obstacle Challenge Race at Camp Rockmont. So if you're not yet getting yourself in condition, now's the time. You can visit our two wonderful, invaluable support organizations for Buncombe County Schools, visit their websites for more information, it'll also allow you to register for either of those events. Now, board, I want to make sure that this date is on your calendar, and that is Tuesday, October 14th. As you're aware, annually, we hold a district-wide advisory councils meeting. This year, that's going to be hosted at TC Robertson High School, and that program will begin at 6:00. And we're really excited, our curriculum instruction, Mr. Robert Waller is working feverishly to coordinate a program that is going to center on just an outstanding arts program that we have in this school system, and I think you're thoroughly going to enjoy this, there will be a number of student performances, and that's truly one of the brightest stars in this school system. So, we invite the public to be there as well. Every school will have their advisory council, so we are looking forward to that event. Again, the K-12 Arts Program. Speaking of the arts, on Tuesday, October 21st, and this will be held at the First Baptist Church in downtown Asheville, the high school all-county choral program at concert will begin at 7:00. And that's always a wonderful event to attend, and so I invite each and every board member to be there as well. I may set a record for just a few comments tonight, fewest in a while, but I do want to close with something very important. I want to make the public aware, if you attended the last board meeting, or you had an opportunity to see the video, you may be aware that there were some concerns that were expressed at the September meeting, especially one of our board members expressed a concern regarding, and I'm going to use the term, the legitimacy of the child nutrition chemical bid process. And that is a purchasing process. So in lieu of that, I ask our child nutrition director to contact Dr. Lynn Harvey. She is the section chief at the Department of Public Instruction, and I ask, we ask her to essentially do an audit of that chemical bid process, just so that we could assure the public that, as we truly believe, that that process was fully in order. And that is an independent audit, by the way, of that process. So what I'd like to do, we just got the summary of the audit, just got the findings this afternoon, about 3:50, so what I'm going to do is to read the cover letter to you, board, and public, and then for anyone that would like access to that report, Dr. Porter has it available in electronic version, that is certainly a public record. Dr. Baldwin, a few weeks ago, Lisa Payne approached the School Nutrition Services Section with a request to evaluate the procurement documents and process used by Buncombe, Haywood, and Henderson County Schools in awarding a chemical contract. She specifically asked that we examine the documents as if we were auditing the district's overall procurement practices. So I want the public to understand, this, again, was an independent audit of the comprehensive process. Mrs. Payne and her colleagues in Haywood and Henderson Counties initially provided us with the basic procurement documents, and provided additional documents immediately upon our request. In response to that request, I appointed a team of school nutrition consultants within the section at Raleigh, in Raleigh, all of whom have extensive prior experience in managing school nutrition programs at the local level, and are currently required to review procurement documents and procedures on a routine basis as part of their monitoring and compliance duties within the section. Collectively, these have, this particular team that came into audit, they have 96 accumulated years of experience in school nutrition. All provide services to Education Regions 7 and 8. She too, she says, "I too" reviewed the documents. Our evaluation indicates the contract was awarded in a manner that is consistent, fully consistent, with federal and state regulations. The attached letter provides additional details, and again, that is available for the public. Consistent with Ms. Payne's request, I'm forwarding this document directly to you. She asked that you receive the results, and indicated you would share them with her at such time as you deem appropriate. I'm sharing that with the entire public. At the time of Ms. Payne's request, I notified the U.S. Department of Agriculture, as such notification is customary when we conduct a review, audit, and evaluation for calls. A copy of this communication will be provided to the federal partner. If may be a further assistance, please do not hesitate to contact me respectfully, Dr. Lynn Harvey, Chief School Nutrition Services, North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. So, I think in lieu of the request for the audit, that audit has been done. Again, it was an independent audit, and the public can certainly have access. If anyone has any questions, you're welcome to the entire report. So, that concludes my comments. Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Dr. Baldwin. We're going to move on, next on the agenda, we have an Evelyn Tools for Schools report. Mr. Murdock, thank you. And, Mr. Murdock, before you begin, I failed to mention that Mr. Pat Bryant is joining us by phone, and Mr. Craig should be here in just a few minutes, so.
I am here.
All right. Mr. Murdock.
Chairman, thank you, Dr. Baldwin. And all of the.
Board members, thank you for giving me this opportunity, and to fill, to fill in, give you a great report on Tools for Schools this year. It grows every year. We start at 4:00 in the morning at Ingles, and we've got to certainly thank our partners, Ingles Markets, and WLOS. Not really good at doing this here, Donnie, if you don't mind. And this year, Asheville Citizens Times joined us, as well as Clear Channel. So we started at 4:00 in the morning, setting up, and this year, and there's some, just some photos here of what we've done throughout the year, and you can see, it goes from any age coming up, and we distributed them, it rained quite a bit, we collected 1.4 million items this year. And without your help, without the school board help, Dr. Baldwin, I know you were there early in the morning, along with a lot of us there, and you can just see the lines there when we distributed the items, but it was amazing this year, and Julie, I know, thank you so much, you know, Citizen Times was a sponsor this year, and got to be part of it, but it's something we can't do alone. When we got there at 3:00 in the morning, the Monday that we distributed it, there was already a line at our door. We saw, we saw a little more than 6,100 students for distribution of school supplies that day, and you can see, you know, some more of the pictures here. 6,100, that's 1,500 more students than we saw last year. And, I mean, it's a tremendous honor for all of us at Evelyn Charities to be partnering with the county schools, and to be able to do this. And again, you can just see some of these pictures, it's just amazing, and now thankful and grateful, but you can imagine that at 3:00 in the morning, getting there, and there was already probably 70 to 100 families already in line. And these are all great, these are good people. These are all great families, that'd be willing to spend the night outside of our door, just to be able to make sure their children have pencils and papers and things that we don't think too much about. And one thing, please remember too, that Tools for Schools goes on all year long. We don't just do it the first day of school. You know, anytime school needs something, anytime anyone, whether it's notebooks, paper, pencils, backpacks, oh, that's a great one, pictures, anytime anybody needs something, you know, we're going to, you know, we're going to do that. So, and you can see it was raining, and thanks to George Suggs, and I was putting up the tent, but fortunately, the rain didn't last all that long. But, as Evelyn continues to do this, along with our student clothing project, we have, this year, in the first six weeks of school, we've already surpassed the number of shoes and clothes we did three years ago for the entire school year. We're almost 50% of what we did all last school year in the first six weeks of school. And again, we can't do it alone, without your help, without your support, and without your kindness, and us all working together, you know, to be able to touch all these students and their families. You know, I told this story before, and I think it bears repeating, it was a year or so ago, mother came up to Susan Riddle, who's over our programs in our office, and said, "I don't know what I would do if you hadn't been here." And when she meant you, she meant all of us. "I was not going to have my daughter register for high school this year because we couldn't afford school supplies." And, you know, Kay, Emily, Jill, Sharon, we see that all the time with the graduation initiative, that students are going to drop out for all kinds of reasons, and all of us working together, make sure they stay in school, but we've never had anybody say they were not going to register for school because they didn't want to be embarrassed because they couldn't afford paper, pencil, and notebooks. But it was a community effort, it wasn't just Evelyn. All Evelyn is, is a conduit from the kindness of a lot of people to where it needs to go. The way we look at it, and is, the other night, I took my dog Bailey out at the end of the night, and I just remember how dark it was in the backyard, and the next night, this full moon was out, and it was just, you know, just lit up the whole backyard, like, you know, the floodlights were on. And just looking at that, thinking, you know, the moon has no power of its own, it reflects the light of the sun. And I think that's what Evelyn is, is that we reflect the light of so many great people in this community, and all of us joining together. So, again, thank you, again, for the honor of just being part of Buncombe County Schools, and for all the lives that you've touched, you know, 16, you know, 6,100 students already, and that was one day. That was the biggest day in Evelyn Charities history, in 20 years, that was the biggest day in Evelyn Charities history. And surpassed against 1,500 more students in one day than we did the year before. So, again, you know, I can't thank you enough for all the lives that you have touched, and all you teachers, administrators, school board members, you do the hard work, and we're in your corner, and if it wasn't for you, we wouldn't even be doing anywhere near what we're doing. So again, thank you so much, you know, for allowing us to do, 24,000 snacks were distributed yesterday to Buncombe County Schools. Thanks again to everyone here, Dr. Baldwin, and certainly Ingles Markets, and all of their vendors, and that was just, we're just getting started. So again, thank you for allowing us to be part of this, and greatest thing I can ask you is, if you have any, if you know someone in need, if you have a student in need, anything at all, please don't hesitate to call us. I think most of you have my cellphone number, so you can feel, you know, you can go ahead and give me a call, and I'll probably pass it on to Susan. But, again, thank you so, so very much, and for being part of everything that you do. Thank you.
Mr. Murdock, thank you very much, we appreciate all the work. I also like to thank all the folks in the community that helped turn out to donate those supplies, I really, really appreciate that, it was overwhelming, so. Moving on next, we have a couple of items with our good news. Dr. Porter.
Thank you, Chairman Reinhardt. Dr. Baldwin, board members, assembled guests. We're not going to let Mr. Murdock get too far away, but I have to tell a story about the Tools for Schools. It is raining, and I pull up like this, I'm not there to work, and I'm watching, Mr. Murdock is out there, he is dressed to work, his hair is a hot mess, he is not under an umbrella, and I am ducking for an umbrella, and he's like, "I'm working, man, I am working." So, his dedication extends far beyond public addresses and things like that, except for that. Yeah, let's not talk about hair today, so let's go. So we're not going to let him get too far away, right now, we're going to ask Ms. Lamb to come up and talk about a graduation initiative with a partnership with Evelyn Charities.
Chairman Reinhardt, members of the board, Dr. Baldwin, it is my distinct pleasure to make this presentation this evening. Mr. Murdock is next to me because he's going to be actually the one presenting the award, because this is, once again, a partnership with the Evelyn Foundation and the Graduation Initiative. We work on many things together, and this is one of the very exciting and pleasant things that we get to do together. Before I begin talking about this award, I'd like to recognize the Graduation Initiative team, they're here tonight, and I don't go anywhere without them, so I want to make sure that you know who they are. Emily Walters, if you'll please stand. Emily serves the AC Reynolds and Irwin districts. Jill Castello serves North Buncombe and TC Robertson districts, along with Middle and Early College. And Sharon Fish serves the Enka and Owen districts and Community High School. That's the best team in the world.[1318.01][1318.01](applause) As you may be aware, historically, the Compass Award has been given by the Graduation Initiative and the Evelyn Charities Foundation each year to at least one school heading in the right direction. And I emphasize that heading in the right direction because the logo for the Graduation Initiative is a compass, and we are giving out the Compass Award, and certainly we want all of our students and all of our schools heading in the right direction. The award is based on six criteria: positive relationships, strong network of support, uses of data, best instructional practices, parent and community outreach, and developing a strong culture that emphasizes graduation and post-graduation goals. This year, the Compass Award goes to Charles D. Owen High School.[1381.65][1381.65](applause) Ms. Turner is here with some representatives from her staff, faculty and staff, and we're so pleased to have you here. I'm going to once again make her stand in front and embarrass her while I talk to you about her school and some of the things that she has done. Charles D. Owen High School earned this recognition for its impressive school-wide focus on creating positive relationships for every child, their strong network of student supports and use of data in a variety of ways, which ultimately all work together to reduce dropouts. Owen High School's emphasis on respect for all students is a grassroots effort led by a group of adults and students to create a culture of respect for all, regardless of race, religion, ethnicity, socioeconomic standing, sexual orientation, et cetera. Additionally, each year, 65 at-risk students are supported through their green folder process, and having each teacher take the responsibility for mentoring one student, creating a personal positive relationship for those students. Even the schedule at Owen High School is not immune from change. In 2013, a SMART lunch program went into place. SMART stands for Students Maximizing Achievement Through Relationships and Time. This program allows clubs, extracurricular activities, and academic support to occur during the school day, so that all students can participate regardless of transportation issues or work commitments. They have data front and center at Owen High School, and a data bulletin board is in the main hallway that tracks important behaviors. Data is a source used in the development of their school improvement plan, and each year, all school-related data is summarized and shared with parents and students each fall in a State of the School presentation. The Owen High School faculty and staff have worked tirelessly on comprehensive strategies aimed at helping students connect more personally with their high school experience, and be successful. This is nowhere more evident than in the fact that their four-year cohort graduation rate has consistently increased each year for the past six consecutive years, from 71% in 2009 to 88% in 2014. Principal Meg Turner and her staff are deserving of the 2014 Compass Award, and it is our honor to present her and her staff with this trophy.[1560.65][1560.65](applause)
Meg, certainly on behalf of Evelyn Charities, and in fact, a lot of you may not know this, the Evelyn Center for Social Enterprise was founded with this one program, with the Graduation Initiative, and we've got a number of programs that have grown from that, but this is something we're all very proud of, Evelyn and the Center for Social Enterprise, and another great partnership, and thank you so much, and for those of you that may not know, within, what, the first five years, the Buncombe County's dropout rate was reduced by almost, right at 50%, which is just remarkable. And so Kay, and Sharon, and Jill, and Emily, thank you so much, we get to see you in the office almost every day, so we appreciate that. Meg, congratulations, and you certainly exemplify what the Graduation Initiative is.
Thank you so much.[1618.58][1618.58](applause) I just want to say that Sharon Fish, she stood up a minute ago, I'm going to ask her to stand again, because I thought she was going to be up here, so Sharon, either stand or come down here really quick.[1633.01][1633.01](laughing) I wanted to just point out that with us tonight, Sharon Fish, who is our Graduation Initiative Coordinator, Counselor, next to her is a teacher, Katie Wall, who teaches in our business area. Next to her is Jennifer Abshire, and Jennifer Abshire is the School Counselor. Next to Jennifer is Kenny McKee, who's a literacy coach, and next to Kenny is Kyle Silva, who's a math teacher. So, it takes a whole village, it truly does, and schools are expected to do more and more today with less and less. And this kind of work and this sort of dedication is because of a lot of people who come from many, many different areas to wrap around and support kids inside and outside of the classroom, and it is truly my honor to work with people who are as dedicated as the ones that we have, and I appreciate what Evelyn does. Where Did You Go, thank you very much for everything, and thank you for this honor.[1685.01][1685.01](applause)
Folks, y'all are in for a real treat. We're going to honor some service awards. Employees who've been here at least 20 years, and the entertaining part is going to be, Chairman Reinhardt is going to be asking them questions, so stay tuned. We begin this evening with a 20-year employee, Mr. Peter Ansley from Evelyn Intermediate School. Mr. Ansley, please come down.[1731.58][1731.58](applause) Congratulations. Tell us a little bit about your 20 years, which schools, where you've been, and how you got to here.
Well, I went back to college in my mid-30s. I wanted to be useful, I felt like I wasn't, and I went to school and became a teacher, and been used, and useful, and it's been wonderful, always been wonderful.
And which, tell us which schools you've been?
Well, I started with the middle college, and during the initial part of it, and then went to Irwin, then Irwin Middle School for 10 years, and then went to Evelyn when we split apart, so I've been here three years now.
Okay. Congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
If you'll come back down real quick, I've got a pen for you. Sorry. You get a little bit of exercise there. Thank you, sir.
Chairman Reinhardt, next we have Mr. Brian Craig with 20 years from A.C. Reynolds High School.
All right, I have the routine now so you don't have to walk back and forth. So, congratulations. Here's your... Tell us a little bit about your career.
Well, I started at Reynolds Middle School doing in-school suspension and got a job in Burke County for a year and then came back to Reynolds High School. And I've been at Reynolds since 1996. Doing football, baseball. And Dr. Baldwin behind me here had the opportunity. He hired me as a baseball coach at Reynolds and I've been doing that since 2003.
All right, well, Dr. Baldwin hired you. Well, congratulations and thank you. Hold on one second here. We'll get your picture. All right. Thank you, sir.
Next with 30 years of service, Mr. Chris Rhodes from Valley Springs Middle School.
Congratulations. Thank you for your service. We'll give you this. So, tell us a little bit about where you got started and 30 years, huh?
30. This is something. It really is. I can remember the eve of the first day of the first year that I started teaching and it seems like it was yesterday. And now it's today. And they say time flies when you're having fun. And I've been having a great pleasure doing this. I started in Hickory in '88. I was down there for four years and I came up here, or excuse me, I started in '84 and I came up here in '88. And I've been at Valley Springs for 20, this is 27 years.
27 years. And what subject do you teach?
It's project lead the way. We do design and modeling. We do 3D modeling on the computer and we build robots. And it's...
We know the kids love that.
It is. Well, I'm the biggest kid who loves it more than anyone.
Well, congratulations and thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Let's get our picture made here real quick. Thank you, sir.
From Haw Creek Elementary School with 20 years of service, Ms. Joyce Staturan.
Joyce, congratulations. Thank you for your 20 years. Have they all been here in Buncombe County?
Yes, they have.
Okay. Tell us where you got started.
Well, I started Haw Creek Elementary after a 20-year career in medical technology and motherhood came along and Haw Creek needed an assistant to help with spina bifida children. So, and I also had experience with Apple computers from the laboratory that I had worked in before. So, they got two goods for the price of one. And I've been there for 20 years and been an assistant in the classrooms and an assistant in the media center under Mary Hour, Mary Ann Hour, and now in the computer labs with the past 10 years.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Can we give you your pen there?
Thank you again.
All right. I'll get your picture here real quick.
Mr. Chairman, with 20 years of service from Avery's Creek Elementary, Ms. Patricia Stevens.
Stevens?
We will catch up with her. And also with 20 years of service from Pisgah Elementary School, Ms. Amy Stewart.
Hey there. Congratulations. Thank you very much. There's your pen and your certificate. So, have you spent all 20 years at Pisgah?
I have. I'm a product of Buncombe County Schools from Woodfin, Irwin Middle, and Irwin High, graduate of Gardner Webb University, and I have spent all 20 years at the best elementary school in Buncombe County, Pisgah Elementary School.
That's amazing. And tell us, tell us what you do there?
I'm a third grade teacher and I've taught third grade for 15 of the 20 years.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much for your service.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the service awards tonight. We thank everybody for their service to Buncombe County.
Have one more? Ms. Terri? All right, Terri, come on down. I'll just tell you a little bit while she's coming down here. Her husband, John, and I go to Honduras on a regular basis and do a little building projects and other things like that. And we've gone to church together for years. This is Terri Downing. Tell us a little bit about your career. Right now, you're at Enka Middle School. Where did you start?
No, I started in 1994 at Sand Hill Venable Elementary School. It's easy for me to remember my anniversary date because the year my daughter was born was the year I started with Buncombe County Schools.
That does make it really... And now she's in college.
And now she's in college, a junior at Western Carolina University. And I started at Sand Hill Venable Elementary School as an intensive intervention teacher. And then I moved, after eight years, moved to fifth grade and I was there for six years. And now I'm a seventh grade social studies teacher at Enka Middle.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Glad your husband made it out with you tonight, too. So, let's get our picture made real quick. Thank you, Terri. That's okay. Did we miss anybody else? Just make sure. All right. Thank you, folks. Thank you, Chairman. Next on the agenda, we have our curriculum feature, which will be some information about our testing and accountability results from 2013-2014 school year.
Yes, sir. This is reporting season and I invite Mr. Gorsuch, our Director of Accountability and Testing, to share with you some data and then I'll share some next steps from that data.
Chairman Reinhardt, Dr. Baldwin, members of the board, it's my pleasure to be here with you this evening to talk about some of the results of what happened with our accountability program and our standardized testing in the 2013-14 school year. As Ms. Swanger indicated, we are in the midst of reporting season. Generally, starting around the end of August through October, we get a bevy of reports from a lot of different agencies, including DPI and College Board, ACT, a lot of other to share out. Some people call these autopsy results. And in a sense, they are because we're actually looking at the year that's ended and how things worked out for that, those activities. The first report that we got this year actually was the Ready Accountability Report that was released on September 4th, the date of your last board meeting. We, of course, you were occupied pretty busily that night with teacher of the year recognition, which certainly is much more important to do than, than looking at test results. But we're going to catch you up a little bit tonight with that. We had another report at the State Board of Education meeting today on the Grade Three Read to Achieve program that began in 2013-14. And I'm going to share a little bit of information with you about that. SAT, I had hoped to share with you tonight, but the College Board, for reasons unbeknownst to me, delayed their reporting of the performance of the graduating class of 2014 until October 7th. That date is embargoed, so I'm sorry that I can't share that with you tonight. And we do have some advanced placement results. The College Board does not finalize the advanced placement report until February, but I do have data that I will share with you now. So, we'll just dive right into this. With the Ready Accountability Program, I will actually report on three different ways that we keep score in the Ready Accountability Model. And those three areas are growth, performance, and annual measurable objectives targets. It's a mouthful, but that's one of, a vestige of the No Child Left Behind program, actually, and we'll talk about that. We'll start with growth. One of the best ways, best descriptions that I have heard about how we're looking at growth in the Ready Accountability Model is have our students kept their place in line. If you imagine all of the students in all of the schools across North Carolina in line in order of their level of performance, do they, from year to year, are they staying in the same relative position in that line? And that really is what the EVOs, value-added model, is intended to show. Our results for 2013-14 were mixed. We had roughly half of our schools met or exceeded their growth expectations. That's 20 schools out of 39 that have had growth measures. Black Mountain Primary, Weaverville Primary, and Buncombe County Middle College do not have a growth measure because they don't have previous data to build on, in the case of Black Mountain Primary and Weaverville Primary, to be able to show growth. And Middle College doesn't administer end-of-course tests, so there's not a growth measure for that. As you can see, the state did better than we did on the percentage of schools that met or exceeded growth. Three-fourths of the schools statewide met expected, met or exceeded their expected growth. We did have six shining stars, six schools that exceeded their expected growth. Statewide, nearly a third of students, of schools, excuse me, exceeded growth. But you see here the six. Emma Fairview, Lester, Pisgah, West Buncombe, and Valley Springs Middle all exceeded their growth projections. We had 14 additional schools that met their expected growth. That's 36% compared to 43% of the schools statewide. And those 14 schools are listed here. Now, that means that 19 of our schools, 49%, did not meet expected growth. It's compared to 25% at the state level. These schools have the challenge of looking at their results and planning for the coming year to how they regain that place in line, the place in line that they had been before they lost a little ground over the past year. Performance is the second area of reporting for the Ready Report. And we actually are looking at composite scores here, looking at the percentage of students who meet these proficiency standards. This year, for the first time, we report out two different performance composites. The first one is called grade level proficiency and that addresses students who have scored at level three, four, or five on the end-of-grade or end-of-course test. In Buncombe County, 60.6% of our students in those tested areas were at that level of grade level proficiency. The state of North Carolina had 56.3%. So, we were better, we did perform better than the state as a whole there. 72.5% of our schools scored higher than the state's grade level proficiency composite. The other way that performance composite is reported is on this college and career ready standard. And that is this percent of students who scored at level four or five. You may recall that last year, the State Board of Education made a change from a four achievement level program to a five achievement level program. Actually, the new achievement level was stuck right in the middle. It was a new level three that represented a standard error in looking at the scores. That's important to include when you're looking at individual student test scores and making decisions about promotion and retention and about final course grades. We need to take into account that test scores are not the same thing as measuring the diameter of stainless steel ball bearings. We don't have that level of precision with test scores. And so, we need to take into account that there is error there. But the college and career ready standards, level four and five, are the same as the proficiency levels we have used for years, the old level three and four. So, we really are comparing apples to apples when we look at the college and career ready composite. And when I get to the next piece, you're going to see how that really comes into play. On the college and career ready composite, Buncombe County was at 50.7% compared to the state's 46.2. I want to confess to you that I was very surprised to see this. This was the second year of our working with these new standards. And in my experience in my career, we have always experienced a big jump from the first year to the second year when new standards were in place. That big jump did not occur, which I think speaks to the rigor and the challenge that's associated with these new performance standards. It's not just Buncombe County. Obviously, the state with a college career ready composite of 46.2, throughout the state, there was a lot of struggling with these standards. We still have work to do to be able to have our students achieve at this level. I am pleased to say that that 50.7 college career ready composite is among the highest in the state. There were 20 districts that had a higher college career ready composite than we did. So, we are among the best in the state in that regard. Annual measurable objective targets, that's what the AMO stands for. Again, this is, kind of goes back to the old No Child Left Behind process where we looked at subgroups and how those subgroups performed. With the ESEA flexibility waiver that was, that the state of North Carolina negotiated with the U.S. Department of Education several years ago, we changed the way we devise these targets and the way we monitor them. The ESEA flexibility waiver requires that we cut in half our percent of non-proficient students in a six-year period. Actually, that's six measurement cycles. It's actually a five-year period. The first one is the baseline. But then, over the course of the next five years, we have to cut that percent of non-proficient in half. So, to give you an example, in one of the tested areas, the statewide percent of students with disabilities who scored proficient on the baseline was 10%. That means there's 90% non-proficient from the baseline. We have to cut that 90% in half in five years. So, 45 points added to the 10. In five years, we have to move from 10 to 55%. The targets go up each year to reflect an equal increment in moving toward that goal. That makes this, this targets incredibly challenging and they're going to continue to become even more challenging year after year. We measure the targets both at a school level and on the LEA level. Buncombe County, as a district, had 181 targets related to these subgroups and we met 140 of them, which is 77%, which compares very favorably with what happened at the state level where 55% of the targets that the state of North Carolina had were met. Collectively, though, if you add up all of the targets that Buncombe County Schools had, that adds to a total of 1,363 targets and our schools met 88.3% of those. I think that represents a high level of performance with these very challenging targets. This graph gives you an indication of a trend of what's happened with the percent of these school AMO targets met over the years. Throughout all of those years, up to 2012-13, we were looking at a total of about 600 targets across the entire county. Beginning with 12-13 and 13-14, we had moved up to a total of 1,300, 1,400 targets. It varies a bit from year to year. There's a bit of a sawtooth pattern to this. As you can see, 2010-11 was a down year, but we have stayed in the same relative position as far as the percent of targets met from year to year. Of our 41 schools that had AMO targets, a third met 100% of their targets. That compares to 21% of the schools statewide. And those 14 schools are listed here. In addition, we had 10 other schools, 24% of our total, that missed only one or two targets. So, they were very close to have achieved that 100%. I guess that's one of the trade-offs that came from the ESEA flexibility waiver. You know, under the old No Child Left Behind model, it was all or nothing. You made 100% of your targets or you were, you did not make AYP. The flexibility waiver lets us look at subgroups independently and look at the, the total picture rather than having an all or nothing criteria. Special commendation, and Amy, are you still here? It was, Amy said she teaches at the best school in the county. Well, she, here's an argument for... Well, here's an argument for that. Pisga Elementary and West Buncombe Elementary made all of their A M O targets, and they also exceeded their expected growth projection. So those two schools deserve a special commendation. Another part of the Ready Accountability Report is some documentation on participation. The requirement, these participation targets are applied to those tests that are used in those performance composites, end-of-grade, end-of-course, and also at the high school level, they're applied to the A C T and A C T work keys. If a school has a subgroup, that means a minimum of 30 students that are identified with this particular subgroup, the school is required to test 95% of those students to be in compliance with the participation target. If the school does not test 95% in the first year, the consequence is they are required to send a letter to all the parents informing them that they did not meet this target, and the letter has to include a plan of action for participation for the next year. The five schools that are listed here are schools that missed one or more targets, 95% participation targets in the 2013-14 school year. Several of these schools were also on this list for last year, but they missed a different, with a different subgroup this year, so they're still in year one. You'll notice they're all high schools, and a common thread throughout the state of North Carolina is that the targets that are missed have predominantly to do with A C T and A C T work keys. I'm going to commend our career development coordinators in Buncombe County because we did a phenomenal job of making sure that all of our students took work keys that were supposed to take. There were places throughout the state where work keys targets were missed because they couldn't identify which students were supposed to take the test. But our C D Cs, through their diligence, made sure that we tested all of the students who were supposed to participate. The issue with the A C T is you've got two chances. The first Tuesday in March is A C T test date. Two weeks later, there's a makeup day. Any student that misses those two days is a non-participant. And remember, I said if the subgroup has 30 students, if there's 30, you're subject to the participation target. And do a little math. How many students can miss the test if you've got a subgroup of 30 and still make 95%? One. If you have two miss, you've missed the target. And we, in fact, have had, experienced that situation where the subgroup is very small and a very small number of students miss the test, but with the very limited opportunities you have to recover from that, we can't make the 95% participation. In year two, a school is given a label of a consistently low participating school. There is actually a list of these schools on the N C Public Schools website, and schools are required to create and implement an intensive intervention plan. Irwin High School does fall into this category this year, and again, you can see, it's due to the A C T. Their Hispanic subgroup was just barely over 30, and the economically disadvantaged students, of course, is a larger group, but it still weren't, there weren't many students that didn't participate, but they did not make it to 95%. So they're in the process of developing this intervention plan to make sure that they don't move to year three, where the consequence is non-participating, there are, records are added as non-proficient to get to the 95% target. It's not that anybody's, any student's test score is changed from proficient to non-proficient. It's just we add in records to get to that 95% participation rate, and that will, of course, have the effect of lowering the proficiency percentage. The other part of the report that was released on September 4th was cohort graduation rate, and we've talked a bit about that, and I just wanted to share, again, with you, the trends that we see over the years, all the way back to 2006. You can see that as a county, we, while we have fluctuated a little from the state, across those years, we are essentially at the same level of graduation rate as the state, just under 85%. To break that down by some of the subgroups, with our black students, we're actually a little ahead of the state as far as our percent graduating. With Hispanics, we're right on the state. With economically disadvantaged, we're slightly below the state graduation rate. And with students with disabilities, we're doing better than the state as far as getting those students to graduation. I'm going to change gears now to give you a little bit of information about Read to Achieve. We actually published a report on our website on September 1st to show, and this was required by the legislation, to show some basic information about how Read to Achieve was carried out in Buncombe County. Today's information that the State Board received actually compiled all of that information for all of the L E As in the state and presented some state percentages. One of the ways that students can demonstrate their proficiency for Read to Achieve is through the standardized test that we administer statewide, and that means beginning of grade three, end of grade three, or retest of end of grade three in the spring. Now, if the student scores Level III or higher on any of those tests, the student has met the Read to Achieve standard. And in Buncombe County, two-thirds of our third graders met the standard outright that way, compared to 60% of third graders statewide. So our students performed a little better on those standardized tests. There are other methods that can be used to meet the Read to Achieve requirement, including an alternate assessment, a Read to Achieve alternate assessment, a portfolio process, a local alternative assessment can be used for that. But when everything had been carried out for the entire school year, including the activities that were associated with our summer program, we ended up with 188 students, 9.9% of our third graders, who had not demonstrated reading proficiency and moved into this school year with a retain, a reading retained label. That's 9.9%. We wish it was zero, but that represents pretty good performance when you look at that 12.7% of third graders statewide did not reach this standard. Those students who didn't, who are in this school year with that reading retained status will have another opportunity to demonstrate proficiency on October 23rd, when we will administer the Read to Achieve test to those students. So they will have another chance to demonstrate that and get rid of that retained label. Want to give you a little bit of information about advanced placement. There's nothing really striking here, other than to show that our trends continue to climb. We have gone from 2001 through 2014, we have gone from about 500 students participating in the Advanced Placement Program to over 1,300, nearly tripling our participation. And in the number of tests taken, we have more than tripled. We have gone from roughly 750 Advanced Placement Tests administered in 2001 to over 2,250 in 2014. That participation is, of course, is very exciting. Along with that increased participation, though, does tend to come a decrease in the performance in the terms of what percentage of our test scores are at Level III or higher. A P tests are administered on a one-to-five scale. Generally, colleges accept III or higher on an A P test as advanced credit going into college. So our percentage has dropped off. We're essentially equal to the state and to the overall global percentage of students that score III or higher. The other thing I wanted to report on for you, because we have been monitoring this for a number of years, is participation by our non-white students. And we are making some progress. This, now, this chart is not reflective of performance in any way. It is simply breaking down 100% of our A P test, or A P candidates, excuse me, that 1,300 students who participated, and breaking them down into these various ethnic groups. We've gone from, in 2007, being at 90% of our tests were taken by white students, to this past year being at 83%. So we are making some progress. It's not as rapid, perhaps, as we would like to see. It does not yet represent the ethnic demographics of our school system, but we're moving in that direction. Of course, the issue here is not simply to put minority students into A P classes, but to prepare them to be successful in taking A P classes, and that is a longer-term project. But we do see some progress as we've moved through the years in this area. So how do we use this data to improve instruction? First thing, we were actually drilling down into the performance files that are available on the NCPublicSchools.org website. From the main landing page of that website, the 2014 Performance Report is the first link under the headlines, and there are these really exhaustive spreadsheets there that break down all this. Let me caution you, if you've been there, I wouldn't recommend trying to print those. One of the three spreadsheets is on these A M O targets, and my computer said that if I had tried to print it, it would be 1,500 pages. So I don't recommend printing it. It is, there are Excel files that are set for auto-filtering, so you can drill down, really, wherever you would like to go. And we're spending a lot of time trying to tease out information from those files. We also provide schools with a report called a Summary Goal Report that gives them some information on how students perform relative to curriculum standards, specific curriculum standards from the standard course of study, so they can see where their areas of relative strength and weakness are. And we're using E V O S. E V O S stands for Education Value Added Assessment System. We have already received value-added reports for the school that basically, again, show basically whether our students kept their place in line. We're anticipating in the next week that we will be able to start working with teacher effectiveness reports that will show for a group of students who had an individual as a teacher of record, how did they perform relative to other groups of students across the state? So we're using those, all of those pieces to drill down and to try to gain information that we can use in our goal setting. So I think now Ms. Swire wants to mention some next steps.
As Mr. Gorsuch mentioned, lots of data analysis in the last few weeks. Since September 4th, the data was released, and one of our data coaches, Connie, is right there. And how many sessions have you trained this month?
Actually, in the model, in the model, using...
Working with groups to unpack their data and drill it down to the individuals who need attention. So we certainly have worked with coaches, specialists, principals. There was a training today. We're going to have another training mid-month meeting, so we'll continue to refine the data, use that information, and attribute it to student performance in the classroom. In addition, schools have been working on their school improvement plans. Those were due a couple of days ago, so we're starting to go through that process. We required schools to write measurable, SMART goals that we can look to see that they're addressing the challenges and what the data shows for those particular schools. We know that part of that school improvement plan deals with professional development. We need to build capacity for our educators, so we're ensuring that that professional development is occurring by our specialists, and we have Eric Grant from E L A and Social Studies here this evening, Brian Macarelli from Science. They have already been out working with teachers, working in the P L Cs, conducting after-school sessions, and all of us will be helping on the designated professional workday, October 27th. Added a little bit of accountability to the school improvement process this year. I'm requiring schools that, based on the highest need, come and present those school improvement plans to Dr. Baldwin's leadership team members. Add another layer of making sure that the goals reflect what the data says for us to work on and that we have measurable strategies in place to do that. This is the first round of the school improvement plans. We'll make changes and revisions and have them to you for acceptance in December. As Mr. Gorsuch mentioned, we're looking at the effectiveness data that's coming out soon. Principals will be reviewing that effectiveness data with their teachers, and as you can imagine, that might yield to some difficult conversations if a teacher did not perform as she or he had hoped to. So to better tool our principals, we have had one of four critical conversations, sessions at our R E S A, and those sessions will help principals have those conversations on how to further grow our teachers. Again, professional development continues. The work is very targeted, in essence, working with, one example, high school biology. And so Mr. Macarelli is out and about, beginning to tailor it per school, because some schools are making growth and others are not making the growth at the capacity of which we would like to see. So very focused, laser-like professional development. Also, as Mr. Gorsuch mentioned, principals received E V O S training September 11th, so we're continuing to support our principals as they drill down all these different parts of data. The Curriculum Department unveiled a new curriculum instructional framework that we've been working on probably the last two years with lots of stakeholders involved. We revealed that this summer. The framework is simply a structure to provide expectations in terms of consistent practices that we want to see in each classroom each and every day. The goal for using this framework is to ensure continual growth and an equitable, quality learning experience for every student in Buncombe County. We want to ensure that students are reading, writing, thinking critically, speaking, and moving every day. It sounds very simple, but we need to make sure in every content area, every day, this is occurring at a high level of rigor. And lastly, the biggest part of school improvement revolves around instructional leadership. That's the key to increasing outcomes for students. On Tuesday, our principals participated in an excellent leadership training from the Franklin Covey Education Institute. Really made us think back to basics, why we got into the profession of educating, and it was a very positive workshop. I think you will see that it helps us all to know why we do this important work. It's hard work. It's very tailored, targeted work, difficult conversations sometimes, celebrations other times, and it's all about growth and building capacity. So we're excited about the changes. Our staff will tell you, we're focused this year, and we've got a plan in place.
Board members, any questions or comments?
I have a question about the new scale, the five-level scale compared to last year's four-level scale. It's my understanding that Levels Four, the new Levels Four and Five are equivalent to the old Levels Three and Four.
Career and college-ready.
I noticed there was a drop in our reading scores for grades three through eight from last year, from 51% proficiency to 49% proficiency. What do you think accounted for that?
I think that there was a lot of focus on working with those at-risk readers for Read to Achieve. I think that we now have a very strong Buncombe County literacy plan in place. I think that you will see students being very intentional and teachers being very intentional in the time that students are reading text and the time that students are writing, especially nonfiction writing, working with literacy across all content areas.
Do you see, this is the second year, and we're going to be going... Do you see, this is the second year, and we're going to be going into the third year, do you think we should see possibly a jump in the third year, or do you think it's...
We certainly hope so. And I would feel that our teachers are getting more comfortable with standards and feeling the students are also coming to them with a higher level of practice and understanding of those standards.
All right, anything else?
Could we get a copy of this?
Certainly.
Helpful.
Yes.
I don't know if we mirrored the state, but there was concern about the performance of middle school students at the state level in mathematics, that the gains were only minuscule between sixth and eighth grade, and that the sixth and seventh grade reading proficiency dropped. Is that, was that also true in Buncombe? Did we see that?
I saw more of a drop in seventh grade reading then. In sixth grade math, we were up as a system. In fact, we were up in every area above the state except biology in a couple of schools.
Overall, we were...
We're above the state, and that's not good enough, but that is where we are.
Sure.
And maybe Mr. Gorsuch can answer this question from the beginning of his presentation. It seems rather startling that the growth in the state on those growth measures, the state was at 75% meeting or exceeding growth, but Buncombe was only at 51% meeting or exceeding growth. Can you account for that difference?
Well, as I said, what it really means is our, in those schools, the students did not keep pace with the pace of growth across the entire state. That's what all of that, those growth measures are comparative in the sense of how did that group of students at that school perform relative to the average growth, averaging increase or decrease across the state? And so in those terms, our schools, half of our schools did not match the growth rate that had been, on the average, seen across the entire state.
Well, I was trying to figure this out when I was looking at the slides, but we started above average. I mean, we're better than the state with the college and career-ready. And the fact that we're, we didn't grow as much, it's harder to grow when you're above the average.
Actually, no, that isn't true because the way all schools, all students start based on what their past performance indicates. So a higher-performing group of students is expected to maintain their same relative position. So it's not a matter of that everybody across the entire state and across the entire scale has to grow the same amount. They are just expected to maintain their same relative position. And we lost some ground with some schools. It technically is not any harder for the highest-performing groups of students to show that level of growth as for the lowest or the ones in the middle.
Would you recommend, I know I've been concerned that the state makes the tests, and we're not, we can't really compare ourselves to other states or other countries very well with our end-of-grade tests. Would you recommend a nationally-normed test? I don't know if this is something the board could put in a resolution to the state legislature asking that we use something like the Iowa Basic Skills Test or California Achievement Test, those sorts of things.
My experience with National Norm Test, and when I first came in to testing 22 years ago, we were doing California Achievement Tests, and we moved forward, and I had to go into the superintendent's office after the second year and say, "I can no longer tell you whether what I am seeing is actual growth or familiarity with the test." Because you cannot afford to retool every year. You can't have a new nationally-normed test every year. And when you repeatedly administer a test, and I'm not suggesting that people teach specific test items, I'm saying become familiar with what specific kinds of questions are being asked. And if that's the instructional focus, then you start seeing big gains. But the big gains may not represent comprehensive learning. They represent familiarity with the test. And so I am not a big fan of nationally-normed tests because they lose their efficacy very quickly.
Are we hearing what the state is going to be looking at the curriculum and the standards? Do you think that, are you hearing anything about the addressing the testing? Do you think there'll be some changes? And I know that's probably a couple of years down the road, but are you hearing anything along those lines?
Well, of course, with end-of-grade and end-of-course tests over the last few additions, the tests, and our Standard Course of Study has been adjusted to reflect recommendations from national curriculum groups, like the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics. Those professional curriculum groups come up with a set of recommendations of what should be, and many states have included those. So that has been a part of our Standard Course of Study in the past. Our recent efforts have been really to come to more of a consensus of what should be included in a test. And of course, we get then into the big debate, you know, and that I've witnessed, you know, across the last 25 years, who should be in control of education as far as what is taught? Is it a local decision, or is it a state decision, or a national decision? If we, if we say we're going to have national standards, that means we need to have some kind of common national assessment. And we see a lot of maneuvering back and forth on that issue. I did want to point out for Mr. Craig, I will post this PowerPoint on our website tomorrow. So it will be there. You'll need to go under Curriculum to Accountability, and it'll be there.
Thank you.
Chair, you asked about the standards. This year, the State Commission is reviewing, or has begun the process to review English Language Arts and Mathematics. We imagine it will take two to three years, so we will have the same standards in place. And testing will match those standards until that process is changed through the State Board. Surveys will begin with educators next month. In November, other interested folks across the state will be invited to share their thoughts. So quite a lengthy process, but we will continue the same standards that we are operating under now.
Thank you very much. Do we, we're moving on now to public comment. Do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir.
How many do we have signed up?
We have four.
Four?
And I just want to let, let your group public comment, you can move that podium, obviously, so that public comment can come to the podium there.
While we move the podium, why don't we take a five-minute break real quick? Leaving? You have public comment to leave?
I had a question. I didn't know, I was, go ahead. I was just asking about the Ingalls schools. Do those people have to pass a kind of test or anything?
No passing, hate to pass.
They just show up. That's good.
Yeah, or putting it on eBay.
Yeah. Uh-huh, okay.
Okay.
I was going to say, I'm adding first. I'm working on it.
I'm starting placing over with all those numbers, though.
We're overdue.
Don't leave that in your pocket when you go to the cleaners. That's what I do.
I always got himself a ten-pocket coin here.
Work is calm.
Yeah, I'm sure he would, yeah.
Soon as we get the other board members back, we'll get started. Here comes one. And here comes two.
I appreciate that, Mr. Reinhardt. It's nice to be able to move around.
We'll try to wait for Mr. Campbell to come back. I just, while we have a moment, I'll remind everyone that if you are here and have not signed up for public comment and would like to do so, if you'll please come down to your left, there's a sign-up sheet. We're not going to move the podium to the middle, so if you'll come over to where the podium is located, you will have three minutes. And please remember that you have the timers, green is go, yellow is you have 30 seconds, and red, you're finished. So I appreciate everyone being here.
Good evening. Those of us who are parents and teachers, appreciate all of you on the board who are true to our mission to serve and serve well all of those children who come through our doors. It's nothing less than demoralizing and inappropriate when a member of the board makes disparaging and misleading comments about the hard work and careful planning that is done on behalf of this county's school system. In her own words on September 30th, Ms. Baldwin wrote, "Students may be leaving Buncombe County Schools due to poor curriculum choices in math and reading. Charter schools offer parents more learning model choices. Of course, this may also, they may also be leaving because some people are promoting a false hysteria that is unsupported by our results and by the charters in private schools. Buncombe County Schools is using research-based practices to deliver the North Carolina state standards in both math and reading. Could it be that our credibility is being undermined from within?" She continues to talk about the future of two online charter schools that will be available and expanding school choice through opportunity, I mean vouchers for economically disadvantaged children. That is, of course, unless they are affirmed or reaffirmed as unconstitutional. Misleading statements such as Ms. Baldwin's reinforce a false premise that the performance and results of charter schools and private schools are even comparable. They're not held to the same legislative burdens, nor do they have the same demographic demands, and are not accountable to the people who have publicly elected this school board. What I know as a third-grade teacher in this county is that I have half the assistant support that I had last year, and last year was about half of what I needed then. I know this is not a preferred model for education. Here's a thought that I think might be more popular. How about we fully fund the needs of our current schools and fully back the hard work of our highly qualified staff and administration? How about we depoliticize the efforts of our school system and provide the best possible education for all of our children? Let's stop pretending that there's a level playing field between traditional public schools and their so-called competition. Let's fully fund and support our public schools.
Thank you, Ms. Dinga. Next, we have Jerry Rice.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, members of the board. I know you look for a highlight of the meeting, so here I am.
Always a highlight.
Thank you, sir. If you weren't for me, in a district, I'd say something, you know, but you're great, you know? I called him Rhino a while ago, and he said, "That fit." So, okay. You know, I've had a lot of disagreements with the school system over the years. I still have, but I still say that you've done a good job. I can't say a blanket statement that you're sorry because you're not. We can say that about anybody. But there are some things that I'd like to point out. I've been a big person about dropout prevention. Dr. Short was here, and I went in and looked at her program, come to find out, she didn't even have goals to even measure dropout prevention after she showed me her program. She was very embarrassed. And it done some good. She went and got some. So that was good. Then we met Mr. Burdock over here, and he started the initiative, you know, the graduation initiative thing. And he and I and teachers all sit down, and we talked a lot about this because I'd embarrassed the school system for years because of such high numbers of dropout, really big numbers. And I told the county commissioners, I said, "You ain't going to change this unless the state changes policy." Well, what happened? The state changed the policy, didn't it? The Indians looked like shining stars. The Indians went to graduation initiative, and began to shine again. It sounded good. But let me tell you something, this is politics we're dealing here. We've got some hard-working teachers and staff, and I don't want to discredit them at all because I meet them every day, and I love them. But the thing about it, there's too much politics in the school system. We need to get down to real business. We've got great parents. We've got great kids that's coming into the system that make you look good. If you didn't have, you wouldn't look good. I worked with kids back 27 years ago, and parents, and parents didn't even get the end of the school system where they could really work because they didn't have an education. of the school system where they could really work because they didn't have an education. Now, we're dealing with kids, parents, and children now that the parents can't even keep up, and they got high school graduation back a few years ago. So, we're seeing times change a lot. But the thing that I see is the newspaper article today. It reminds me of the graduation initiative, the dropout. Nobody wanted to do anything. But you know what happened? The AP wire come across Erwin High School dropout, big letters about this size across the newspaper, and everybody went crazy. I'd already been preaching this to county commissioners and school board too for years. They didn't take my word, the asterisk and times wasn't doing nothing either, and they still won't today. AP wire picked this story up. What happened? The county commissioners and everybody went nuts. They started doing something. They started working on the real goals and not politics. So, that's the reason we're at the place we are today, is because we're working on something.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Next, we have Robin Pass.
Chairman, Board, good evening. With your permission, I would like to allocate my time to Ms. Jan Blunt this evening.
Just three minutes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Reinhardt, members of the board, Superintendent Baldwin. I'm here out of tonight, out of concern for a video that I saw last night, which followed on the heels of a letter that I got a copy of that was addressed to Jerry V. Hahn and from Jerry V. Hahn to Ms. Lisa Baldwin, and another document addressed to Lisa Payne, the child nutrition director, and a copy from the Haywood County Tea Party of a document filed a complaint to the North Carolina bar against a board attorney filed by Ms. Baldwin. This represents a pattern of attacks on the school professionals. I was attacked very publicly, as you all know, led me to file two grievances against Ms. Baldwin. And I'm very concerned that what I saw in the video tonight, last night, where she talks about our school system as being crime-ridden, and she talks about our dropout rate as being one in six students dropping out. She's doing this on WYFF television in Greenville. She's hardly an ambassador for the school system. And she goes on in that video to say, she is the lone voice trying to keep us from going in the wrong direction. I have more confidence in our board than that. I have more confidence in our school system than that. Are we headed in the wrong direction, or are we doing the best we can? All of us in this school system, 4,000 employees, I was one for five years, we work darn hard to do everything we can for these kids, and I think we deserve better than to have a school board member go to South Carolina and publicly say that she represents a terrible school system, and she's the only person who can fix it. And what are her qualifications? She's an economist. I'm getting a degree right now, a master's degree, in the department I'm in. I know that an economist is a person who has a PhD, who teaches classes and publishes in literature in the economic field. That's not the degree that Ms. Baldwin has. She has a master's in what she calls economic policy and law, and yet, there is no such degree. She has a degree, as she has admitted to some of you, in consumer economics. Why is she misleading the public about her education degree as a representative of the Board of Education? She has had some problems with the truth, she's had problems with ethics, she accuses people of all sorts of crimes and ridiculous things, and most of all, she has sent private, confidential employee and student information to the media, to the public, one of which you actually sent to federal authorities to look into.
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin.
Thank you.
Chairman Reinhardt, Ms. Baldwin signed up, I don't...
She's a member of the public, oh gee, really?
All right, Ms. Baldwin.
I didn't want to speak when she spoke about me in January, by the way.
My name is Lisa Baldwin. I'm a parent of four children who've been through the Reynolds School District. My youngest son is a sophomore at Reynolds High School. I've served as your school board representative for four years. Ms. Blunt resigned from her position as the communications director this, earlier this year.
Ms. Baldwin, and I'll remind you that board members cannot speak about personnel matters. Just a reminder.
Thank you. Ms. Blunt resigned from her position in February, preceding that, I understand, there was a legislative inquiry into her emails.
Baldwin.
I am speaking to the public.
Ms. Baldwin, you are a board member, and I'll remind you to not talk about employees. It is inappropriate.
I'm talking about the legislature and their inquiry. Thank you. I also wanted to continue. My WYFF statement was requested. I was contacted by WYFF and asked to make a statement as a candidate for reelection. Buncombe County Schools does rank highest in North Carolina in criminal acts per student on average for the past three years. We do have students without textbooks. We have county funding that has been cut for classroom materials and instructional supplies by 41% over the past three years. We have half of our third through eighth graders, as you heard earlier, that are not reading at grade level, that were not proficient on end-of-grade reading tests. One in six students are dropping out of school in Buncombe County. I don't think that there's any further need to go on. I think, hopefully, you all can make your own decision about the comments that have been made tonight. Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on in the action agenda. We have a resolution to transfer property to the county for the new Inca intermediate school. Do I have a motion to approve that? Is there a second? Any questions or comments?
Yes, I had an amendment to the motion to approve the minutes. If you can hold on just one minute, I'll find...
We're not on the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, what was the...
We're not on the minutes, we're on the resolution to transfer property.
Yes, and that's what I wanted to address.
Well, you said you wanted to amend the minutes.
I'm sorry, I was farther down the agenda.
All right, what is your question or comment?
Yeah, I'm concerned about the COPs funding, the certificates of participation method, and why was this chosen? I would like to know. Is Mr. Fairley the best person to ask?
Ms. Baldwin, the county of Buncombe chooses the manner in which to provide the funds. This board requested funds for a new Inca intermediate school, and the county is the one that incurs the debt and pays the liability. So, no one here can answer that question. You would have to ask the county finance officer, but it's part of their overall financial plan for the county of Buncombe, which I will add, never requires a tax increase the way it's funded.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Yes, I do have concerns about using the certificate of participation method, because we are not going to have a voter referendum on this.
Chairman, I would advise you that concerns about the form of funding are not appropriate for this board to consider. Ms. Baldwin can make her comments, but there's no action this board can take legally regarding the form of funding. That's a county decision.
Thank you.
Well, I think it's important for the board to understand before they approve the resolution that we will be releasing the county from restrictions on the amount of debt that they can incur. The county currently has over $400 million in debt, which I feel like that is a lot of debt, of course, but we're approaching half a billion dollars in debt, and the county is looking at building another human services building possibly in the future for a cost of $43 million.
Well, you might want to take that up with the county commissioners.
I feel like if we're approving this, you know, we're saying it's...
We're not approving a human services building.
No, what we're approving, using this loan program without a voter referendum at the polls.
Ms. Baldwin, again, so the board can act, you're not approving anything to do with the financing, all you're doing is approving a transfer so the county can use their preferred method of financing. So, again, the board is not being asked to approve COPs. The board is just being asked to transfer the property so it can be used as collateral in a loan. It's that simple.
I agree with you, and I think the point, what I'm really trying to make is, it's that every dollar we spend on servicing a school debt is a dollar that cannot be spent on something Buncombe parents, students, and teachers might value more, such as teacher salaries, textbooks, and instructional supplies.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, but the...
Ms. Baldwin.
Just to clarify, because this is becoming a political speech, the money that is dedicated for capital sources cannot be used for classroom teachers. There's a dedicated source of capital funding in the county of Buncombe, which is funded from sales tax that was approved by the legislature. And again, it has nothing to do with other choices for current operating expenditures, nothing to do whatsoever.
Mr. Campbell, as the board attorney...
Ms. Baldwin, you are fully aware of this. You know this.
I am, and we can always ask the legislature to change that money. That is within our purview. So, this is money that could be used in the classroom. All it takes from us is a request to Nathan Ramsey, Tim Moffett, or Susan Fisher. We can ask them to create, for a local bill. They have, this was formed by a local bill. All this capital money's coming in from Article 39 sales tax. A portion of that created, a local bill was passed a long time ago that set aside that money for construction, but times have changed, and it's possible for us to change that local bill. It's very simple, so the money could be focused on the classroom where it's needed. When we have enrollment declining, we had 515 students lost this year.
Mr. Chairman, can I call the board?
Brick and mortar is the last thing that we really need. I have the floor for 10 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to actually bring up one point, if that's possible, since...
Well, let Ms. Baldwin finish.
Well, can we stay on the topic, which is this one resolution that's on the agenda? Not all that other stuff that she keeps bringing up?
We are on topic. We're talking about 20-some...
We're talking about this resolution right here, and I can read it if you want, but it says to transfer real estate. Do you want to do that or not?
Exactly. This is collateral for a loan. Just think of it as a car loan. What we're asking for...
Collateral is, thank you.
We're using the property as collateral for the loan, and that's what we're requesting them to do. We're going into debt.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Churchill.
Yes, with regards to the financing for this school, I'm pulling up a letter that was actually mentioned in public comment from Jerry V. Hahn, where he speaks to some of Ms. Baldwin's concerns, and one of the things that he puts is, "While it is true that the county has $400 million of debt, you fail to point out that 56% of this debt is for education, and is done with a solid financing plan, which will allow more than 60% of this debt to be paid off within 10 years with no increase in property tax as a result of this debt." I think that speaks volumes as to the fact that the county seems to know what they're doing with regards to financing the school.
I think that Mr. V. Hahn and I differ on our fiscal responsibility perspective.
And I tend to believe Mr. V. Hahn.
As far as what I'm talking about is opportunity cost. So, if we invest the money in brick and mortar, and we continue to have students leave our school district because we're not responding to them with learning models, please don't interrupt.
Ms. Baldwin, do you want a new school for the Inca district or not?
Please do not interrupt.
Simple question. Do you want a new school for the Inca district or not?
I have the floor, Ms. Churchill. I'm talking about opportunity cost right now, and how...
All right, we're going to stop right here, and we're going to get back to what is on the agenda, okay?
Mr. Chairman, I do have the floor.
Which is the resolution to transfer the property to the county. All right, is there any other comments about that? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we are moving on to the policy 9040. I would like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and pass this in one reading, the prequalifications of bidders for construction and repair work projects. I'll make that as a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any questions?
I feel like we're really getting on shaky ground when we suspend the rules that we have passed. You know, what's the point of making rules if we're going to constantly suspend them and allow us to go in a different direction?
First of all, there's a state bill that was passed that this goes into effect yesterday. So, I think it's imperative that we consider doing this. The state legislature is pretty much mandating it, so...
What are they mandating precisely? Just the prequalification or this particular policy?
Mr. Fairley, do you know when the policy will first be used, begin being utilized? When?
Yesterday.
When you say, "When will the policy be utilized?", when will it first be used for a project, is what, for the Inca project? Do you know when the Inca contractor will start to pre-qualify bidders?
They've actually already started.
Okay. So, I guess the question for the whole board, is there a business reason to pass this policy tonight instead of waiting another month for a second reading? That's the straightforward question. Because... Okay, so there is a need to start using this policy right away for the Inca intermediate school?
And the advertising has already started, I believe, in the paper for people to send in their qualifications. Okay. Okay. Okay.
The first phase, the site work, that happened before this bill was required, so there was advertising for contractors, bidding contractors for the site work, which is underway.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
I do have a question. I'm trying to find the spot in here where the construction manager at risk model is mentioned. Mr. Fairley, can you elaborate on that, please?
In this legislation, when you use a construction manager at risk, you are required to pre-qualify subcontractors.
That helps, thank you. Do you think, is this policy putting a seal of approval on that construction manager at risk process?
The construction manager at risk process is recognized by the state. It's used all over the state. It obviously endorses it if it is setting the rules for that process by, that the state endorses.
Used quite a bit by the county government on several building projects that are going on right now.
Locally, and many other school districts across the state.
Can you clarify that the construction manager at risk process is not a bidding process, but it is, that you are selecting a contractor based solely on qualifications?
No, it's a bidding process.
Okay, can you explain how that works, then? Because we did not bid out the job for the Inca intermediate school. We selected Hickory Construction based on their qualifications.
Once the general contractor, the construction manager at risk qualifies subcontractors, there'll be a multiple bid process for the subcontractors.
Yeah, please answer the question. Was the construction manager at risk...
If I could, this is a legal matter. This is a legal matter, and as board attorney, I can't sit here and watch a miscommunication happen, Ms. Baldwin. Just take a breath. He misunderstood your question.
Okay.
He was responding to what the contractor at risk does. They bid it out to the sub tiers. He misunderstood. You're correct. Under the legislation, which is lawful and used all over the state of North Carolina and was approved by this board in a prior meeting after discussions and work sessions, you chose the method of construction manager at risk where you look at the most qualified first, you then enter into negotiations for a guaranteed price maximum. If you have successful negotiations, you hire that firm. If you don't, you then move to the next qualified firm. That is the way it works. Qualitative judgments aside of what's best or better, that is the legal way it works. That's the way under the statute. Then the construction manager at risk does put it out to a bid process. Here, it will be bid to the people that prequalify. Again, it's my job to point out legalities, and I saw some miscommunication there that was going on.
Let me just go back to the original question for Mr. Fairley. Was the construction manager at risk chosen based on their qualifications or through a bidding process?
Ms. Baldwin, that question was just answered, and this is nothing more than political speech. You know good and well-
I have a question my constituents are concerned about.
Ms. Baldwin, I'm talking, okay? You've had plenty of time to talk. You know good and well what steps have taken place to where we are right now. This is nothing more than another political speech.
Point of order, point of order.
Well, actually, I'm still talking, and you can't do anything until I finish, because I have 10 minutes, too.
Are you finished? I'm still trying to get an answer from Mr. Fairley.
Ms. Baldwin, I haven't recognized you. So, go right ahead.
Was the construction manager at risk for Buncombe County Schools, for the INCA intermediate school project in particular, was that contractor chosen through a bidding process?
Ms. Baldwin, we're going to stop right there. That has been answered numerous times, not only tonight, but in other sessions.
The newspaper said it was a bidding process.
Does anyone else have a question? All right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Next on the agenda, we have upcoming the North Carolina School Board Association Convention coming up in November. I am definitely the only one that will not be there, and so we need to pick four voting delegates for this, and since Ms. Baldwin and Mr. Bryan are up for reelection, what I would like to do is make a recommendation that, Ms. Churchill, will you be attending?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mr. Pless?
Yes.
And Ms. Ann Franklin, you will all be attending. I would like to make a motion that those four be our voting delegates. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right. Next on the agenda, I'm going to take the minutes, the regular meetings, minutes from September the 4th, 2014. Do I have a motion to approve?
They're moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any questions or comments?
I would like to amend those minutes.
Okay, go right ahead and make your motion.
A moment till I pull that up. I'm sorry for the delay. Yeah, and I apologize earlier. I assumed that the minutes were going to go to the top of the action agenda when we-
Mr. Chairman, while she's going through her papers, I just actually noticed something on the minutes. Would it be appropriate now to point out? I don't know how I missed this, but it states that I was absent, and I think I was here. Okay, thank you.
That's a typographical error.
I remembered shaking an awful lot of fantastic teachers' hands, so I thought, I'm pretty sure I was here. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't notice it before.
Ms. Baldwin, are you ready to make your motion?
Yes, I move to amend the minutes to more accurately reflect the September 4th meeting, adding that Ms. Baldwin expressed concern that the contract was not bid out, and this is in relation to, if I can preface that, our discussion of the construction, the INCA intermediate school construction.
We have that as a motion. Is there a second to make those changes?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor of making those changes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so now we're back to the original.
Yes. I'm abstaining from that vote because it's hard to hear exactly what that was, and I don't want to vote one way or the other, and just mark me as abstaining from that, attend them to the original motion.
All right, that's fine. All right, so we're back to the original motion to approve the minutes as written with the change that Ms. Churchill was here.
I also wanted to amend, I thought it'd be easier to do this separately, the other, I sent both of these corrections this afternoon to everyone. I move to amend the minutes to include in the chemical bid section that Ms. Baldwin expressed concern that no total bid amount for chemicals, that is cleaning supplies for cafeterias, was submitted to the board for approval.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, hearing none. Back to the original motion to approve the September 4th regular meeting minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Jackson, are you good?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. All right. Next, on the action agenda, we have a motion to make a recommendation to the North Carolina School Board Association that we nominate the Buncombe County Commissioners as the County Commissioners of the Year. I'll make that in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
Yes, if someone else wants to go first, while I'm looking this up.
Anybody have any questions or?
I just think it's a wonderful, am I right?
Go right ahead.
I think it's a wonderful idea. I've had the opportunity to work with commissioners for a number of years, and they are very supportive of our schools in Buncombe County, and that's, they are very supportive of our schools.
Just to kind of give a little bit of information, you know, Buncombe County, the school board, we are members of the North Carolina School Board Association. We do have an annual meeting in Greensboro. I believe it's the 17th through the 19th of next month, and part of that is they take nominations from school boards to recognize county commissioners and some other folks, superintendent. There's a few other folks that they recognize, and this is the first time, this is in conjunction with the Asheville City Schools. They passed a resolution last night supporting this, and so we, since they represent, the county commissioners represent not only Buncombe County Schools but Asheville City Schools, I personally would like to support this. So, any other questions or comments?
I do have concerns about this. As you know, I brought up during public comment that the budget for instructional supplies and textbook funding from our commissioners has been cut by 41% over the past three years. Of course, this is a budget we submit to them, that was a six-to-one vote, basically, you know, rubber stamping, you know, this cut, and the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners recommends that county commissions ask for a purpose code and function budget from the school district, which our commissioners do not ask for. That's, could be called line item detail. So, they may not even be aware that they're cutting instructional supplies and classroom materials, teaching tools for our teachers. They also may not be aware that they have been awarding $4.6 million in bonuses to our administrators, to principals and assistant principals since 2006, and this $4.6 million in bonuses continued even when teacher salaries were frozen back in 2008. This is in addition to the supplement, the salary supplement the county commissioners give these administrators, plus their longevity pay, plus what's called extra duty bonus pay. This pay is even distributed in the summertime when there are not extracurricular activities for these principals and assistant principals to attend. I think we are giving, you know, by nominating them for this award, we're saying, "This is a good thing. This is okay." Our teachers are not being rewarded for extra duty, which they perform every day, whether it's bus duty at 7:00 a.m. in the morning, or staying after school to collect tickets for sporting events, being the band director, and being at the concert. He's not paid extra duty pay for that, yet the principal who attends that concert is receiving extra duty pay. There are other concerns I have. I've compared us with New Hanover County, an identical school district in almost every way, the same number of students as Buncombe County, practically the same property tax revenues, about the same per capita income for New Hanover or the Wilmington area, and they're receiving at least $10 million, more from their commissioners every year for their schools. So, you know, I see a lot of, you know, problems with this nomination, and I will not be able to support it.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I'd just like to point out that, you know, since 2008, the support from commissioners has gone up, and we appreciate the effort that they make. Certainly, I believe that they all work hard to try to give us as much money as they can. Even last year, between the two districts, they raised the funding $3.1 million to the schools, and so you might be able to take one particular item and try to politicize that one item to fit your agenda, but when you look at the overall amount that the county sends to us, they are definitely doing their part to try to help us out. Our school system is second to none in facilities, and that goes back to the county commissioners. That is, the county commissioner's primary responsibility is to supply the buildings and the electricity and the water, everything that goes into those buildings. More and more, they are being relied upon to help us with teachers and teachers assistants, and we do have a healthy supplement that goes to all of our employees, and that supplement helps with the cost of living. Asheville is a little bit higher than a lot of areas. While our supplement is not the highest in the state, it ranks amongst some of the best. And so, I would just like to say publicly that I appreciate the work with the county commissioners. We're very fortunate here in Buncombe County. The eight years that I've been on the school board, I've had the opportunity to work with a lot of other school board members around the state, and the relationship between school board members and county commissioners is not always that great, and so I appreciate the fact that we can sit down and work with our county commissioners. They will listen to us and help us out as much as they can.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the superintendent. I'm just trying to remember. Can you tell me, Dr. Baldwin, how many teacher assistant positions were saved last year strictly from the money that the county commissioners allocated that they did not have to?
I'm going to estimate for this year, I think, Ms. Lopez, you, Ms. Frisbee, help me with this, but I think initially, when we looked at that state cut, we were 50, I'm thinking 54, and so 30 and a half, that would be 23 and a half positions that were saved. My mom would be proud of it, she's a math teacher. I think I'm right. But let me, can I just, an additional clarification on that? I think I have to be careful with the 40%, because I don't want disinformation going out to the public, not that we would ever do that. But when you start talking about percentages with textbooks, with instructional supplies, realize that there's state funding and there's local funding. We request specifics to the commissioners, so when that 40%, I'm not so sure that that's not state funding regarding textbooks. In fact, textbooks were a higher cut from the state instructional supplies. We do receive local. In fact, Ms. Frisbee, help me with this. I believe the only funding we currently receive regarding instructional supplies actually does come from our commissioners and local funding. Is that correct? We basically depleted that with the state, and again, that's why it's extremely important for Mr. Murdock's efforts and what's happening with our church network and our community with instructional supplies. And again, while I'm on that soapbox, realize that we said back in 2008, 2009, that if we were going to take reductions, whether they come from state, federal, local, we would take those in instructional supplies and textbooks and not people. And I'm very proud to say that this school system has been steadfast with that, now six consecutive years of budget reductions, but I would, I would be very cautious in terms of some of those percentages thrown out with local and state. Thank you.
Can I just clarify that, please? It's my understanding from Dr. Baldwin that we just displaced the state funding, we moved the state funding for that, for textbooks somewhere else, and then asked the county to replace that money, but we didn't go beyond that. We didn't ask them for their portion. They're to fill the education funding gap left by the state. We rank 34th in per pupil expenditures in Buncombe County in the state, yet we're the 11th largest school district. We're the 7th largest county by population. So, why do we rank 34th, you know, in per pupil expenditures from our county commissioners if they're truly fully funding our schools? What you've got to look at is that the property tax revenue is a pool of money, and whereas 43% of that property tax money was going to schools three years ago, now we're down to only 41% of that property tax revenue going to schools. So, yes, while the amount they're giving the school district is increasing by a small amount each year, as a part of the property tax revenues, the total funding for education has gone down. I find this alarming, and I'm concerned because I know AB Tech had a sales tax hike put in place to fund some of their buildings, and the commissioners took $2 million away from AB Tech in the last several years since that tax hike went into play. So, you know, the concern there is that the percent of property taxes going to education is declining, and if they're going to take $2 million from AB Tech, why didn't they give it to the schools, to the public K through 12 schools? Where did that $2 million go?
I apologize, Mr. Chairman, and I have no intent to spar with you, Ms. Baldwin, but I do, again, it's my job to make sure disinformation is not provided to the public, and my question, use a pretty simple question, it's a pretty simple math question. Would you rather be ranked 34th out of 150 school systems regarding the funding source that is local? You're absolutely correct. In fact, I probably need to check my numbers, they're not in front of me, or would you rather be 85th ranked regarding state funding? Buncombe County falls below the average of state funding per pupil expenditures, and my concern is the rank in the state. Again, would you rather be 34th? Would you rather be 85th? So, if we're talking about an attack on the commissioners and local funding, we also need to include the state funding source, so that, again, we're talking apples to apples out there to the public. I apologize, Mr. Chairman, I was probably out of order.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just point out one thing also in defense of the county commissioners, and since Ms. Baldwin really is searching to put blame on somebody, I'd like for you to take a look at yourself. You talk about the gap in funding. One of the huge gaps in funding is the $11 million that is going to vouchers that could have gone to the public school system, and you, as a board member who the state representatives and senators look to for guidance, campaigned on those vouchers or opportunities, scholarships.
Me.
Do not interrupt me.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
I am speaking to you now.
Ms. Baldwin, you've had your opportunity to speak.
And I am definitely speaking for the public, as is noted right out there. So, if anybody is to blame, and I do not laugh, this is not funny. This is my child's education. You may not care about public schools, but Ms. Baldwin, I swear to you, I do.
Point of order.
And I have had enough of your bad behavior towards our schools.
Okay, all right, folks. All right. We're going to call the question on this?
No, excuse me.
All right, Ms. Baldwin?
Would you allow a rebuttal?
I'm going to call the question, okay? You've had plenty of opportunity to speak. We don't need another political speech, so, all right. All in favor of supporting this nomination for the county commissioners of the year, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
They're moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. All right. All right. So, coming up in a couple weeks, we have the countywide advisory council meeting at Robertson High School. That will be October the 14th at 6:30?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. The next regularly scheduled board meeting, which will be my last, will be the Thursday, November the 6th, 2014. And then also, as we mentioned previously, we have the North Carolina School Board Association Conference, which will be held November the 17th through the 19th in Greensboro. So, we appreciate you folks being here. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.